All right, good evening. It's Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. This is District Arlington Heights School Board, District 25 Board Meeting. We just came out of closed session and are in open session. It is 7:13 PM. Madam Secretary, if you'll note the role, I'll move directly to the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the right, United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. This is a open meeting committee of the whole to continue our dialogue around full day kindergarten. We've left last meeting with a series of kind of, I'll call them options, for lack of a better term. So we're going to be reviewing an update on that, or Dr. Bynne is going to be reviewing update on that. And then we'll go into a few pieces and then probably go back into close to finish up. So, without further ado, oh, we gotta do community input, and we do have some blue comment cards here, so I will begin with our script here. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. As the board strives to make the best decisions for the district, public input can be helpful. In order for the board to reserve sufficient time to conduct its business and operate its meetings in spirit of civility and decorum, speakers are expected to follow the following guidelines. Number one, address the board only at a time provided on the agenda and only after being recognized by the board president. Number two, identify yourself and be brief. Your comments must be limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may shorten this time in order to conserve time to allow the maximum number of people and opportunity to speak. And the third point is please be respectful and courteous. The board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. And just a final note, the board typically does not respond to comments or questions or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period, but we do listen intently and appreciate the input from our community. So, without further ado, I will go to Britt Poethress.
Pulleranis.
Pulleranis, I can never do her last name.
So, I've obviously sat up here several times speaking about how impactful full day kindergarten could be. So, my comments and I actually don't have much to do with full day kindergarten, other than to say that I 100% support full day kindergarten, but I think we need to be more transparent about how this is going to come to fruition to families. And I believe that we need to think about the whole child through the development of our schools, and think about ways to start providing care within home schools as much as possible. I was on the strategic committee, and that was a goal across the board. We can use full day kindergarten and the expansion of our buildings in order to now keep more and more children at their home school. So let's look at that opportunity as opposed to just adding kindergarten. And I think that more families will be behind that than just the people who want full day kindergarten. But today I come with a little bit of a different message, and I want to start with a quote that Dr. Bynne said at the beginning of August, which is, "All activities will follow a more typical school year for 2021, 2022." This was a statement made by Dr. Bynne in August of 2021. Parents and children got excited for the return to in-person learning, sports, other extracurricular activities. Parents were thrilled to be finally back, let inside of their school buildings, to watch their children do what they love. Basketball, volleyball, band concerts, choir, Dryden's concerts for second grade, Halloween, Valentine's Day parties, all have, for the most part, returned to normal. What is not returning is a chance to see our children at Ivy Hill perform in their typical music shows. Many parents have asked why at Ivy, we are one of the only schools only allowing a virtual option. And there have been a variety of answers, but it all comes back to one. It is up to our principal to make that decision. So at Dryden, their principal has decided to have concerts in the fall. They had concerts in the fall, and now they will have concerts in the spring outside. At Patton, they are allowing an in-person for a limited group of parents for their fifth grade show. At South, Aunt Thomas has been allowed to bring their musicals back, but at Ivy, we are told no. This isn't about safety, because if it was, no school would be able to do this. It is a simple lack of leadership and creativity. In the last 48 hours, I have gathered over 140 signatures from a petition that I will provide from parents and families who would like the opportunity to see their students perform in person at Ivy Hill Elementary. We would like our second graders to finally have the opportunity to have a normal school experience. My sixth grader graduated from Ivy Hill, and the video of the class made, they made a video, and one of their favorite memories was performing in some of their shows through their first four years there. Today, we received an email that explained the rationale for why the choice was made to do a full virtual concert, which by the way, isn't a virtual concert. It is a filmed video clips of each classroom put together. Parents will be able to see and hear their own child's class perform as we are recording each class individually. Students will also highlight playing instruments and sharing some of their own students' compositions. A traditional in-person experience would not provide an opportunity for students to feel connected to one another while they perform. The rationale for not having the kids in front of parents' space? Are they actually performing as a whole second grade class together? I was confirmed with my daughter that no. I don't understand how videotaping a performance makes you feel more connected as a class. If you're dividing classes for videotaping, why can't you just have kids perform in front of their parents by their class? And this is a quote, "When a petition is put together, we must stop and review what the community wants." This was said by candidates during our school board election, and we have about 140 voices heard, and the countless others. We are speaking for our children who deserve more. I would like, and along with the other families that have signed this petition, for Dr. Bynne and the board to change their policy around concerts, to have all grade levels at every school have an in-person option for District 25 moving forward, and not leave it up to individual principals to let their personal ideas get in the way. This should be consistent across all schools. Thank you."
Thank you, Britt. All right, next we have Sarah Mongdoven.
Good evening, and thank you for listening to me tonight. I do realize this meeting is for full day kindergarten, but this was too important to me to not come and speak. I am here to ask you, you who we parents have entrusted with the well-being of our children, why? Why is it February, and we are still forbidding children to keep current with their class when they're forced to miss school due to quarantine? Why are we still forcing them to shove their lunch down their throats in 15 minutes and sending them home starving or with a stomach ache, or punishing them for sneaking the rest of their food onto the playground at recess? Yes, this is happening despite what your principals are telling you. Ask your kids how lunch is going. Mine tell me this, you're either at the COVID table or the close contact table, or you get a think about it by the supervisors for talking to your friends and not keeping your distance. If you're lucky enough to have first or second lunch, you're allowed to go to a special table to finish your food if you don't have time. But if you're on the third shift, like my kids at Ivy Hill, you have no option to finish anything, hence the sneaking of the food on the playground. Why do we keep segregating them to the table of shame if they've been a close contact or just come back from quarantine? Why are we still yelling at these children to stay away from their friends when it goes against their very human nature? They are children. They get one shot at this childhood thing, like we all had one shot, and we got to live it normally. My second grader has never had a normal year of school. He was in kindergarten in March of 2020. This has been going on for over a quarter of his entire life. Why is he being robbed of the things that normal kids get, like in-person performances? As a music teacher, this one really kills me, and Greg, I know you're a music teacher too. This is just awful. I understood and respected why we needed to go back to these strict rules in the fall when kids weren't able to be vaccinated and they were still vulnerable, and there were people we needed to protect, but now every single person entering our schools has the option to be vaccinated, and our community is very highly vaccinated. What on earth is the argument now? Why do you continue to hold back our most precious children? It is no longer about safety, school is safe. Listen to the experts you've listened to for two years. Follow the science as you claim to always have. Give us an end game to this nightmare for our children, and please stop hurting them.
All right, I think that were the only two. Do we have one online? Yeah?
We had one comment that was submitted online from Meel Johnson. This is a statement from the League of Women Voters of Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, Buffalo Grove, and surrounding areas. The League of Women Voters of Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, Buffalo Grove, and surrounding areas urges the District 25 Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Lori Bynne to take immediate action to implement a tuition-free, full-day kindergarten program. So often conversations about things like full day kindergarten focus on what we can't afford to spend. We talk about the cost of new classrooms. We talk about how many additional teachers the district would need to hire. We talk about tax levies and bonds and referenda and tuition, but we never talk about the things we can't afford to lose. How long do you think Arlington Heights and District 25 will be an attractive place for young families to settle if we fail to keep pace with other communities and school districts? How many families will leave District 25 schools in search of an education that prepares their children for the world they live in now? How many kids will not receive the kind of high-quality education and support they need and deserve because we spent so many months and years talking about whether or not we should prioritize them? The data is clear, full day kindergarten helps all children. The community has been clear. The majority of families in the 2017 survey wanted full day kindergarten. Let's keep talking about this, but let's stop talking about if we should provide full day kindergarten. Let's start talking about how we will provide tuition-free, full-day kindergarten for our families.
Okay. Thank you to all those for sharing their input. Let's move on to the main agenda item here, the full-day kindergarten options.
As we move closer to the time when the board is hoping to make a decision about full-day kindergarten, and I think the goal date that the board was hoping for was by the end of March this year, we'd like to focus this specific committee meeting on the facilities options that we can be considering. Specifically, we hope to help the board narrow down the options of how to physically host full-day kindergarten to one or at the most two formats if possible. Narrowing that down helps us with all the additional information that I'll share with you in a moment, that we're hoping to bring to the board at the next committee of the whole meeting. Before we move into this discussion, it's important to share that there are still many related areas to discuss, and information that we know the board needs to make a final decision. Some of that information includes an updated enrollment study. It will really help finalize that enrollment study if our demographers can know what physical format might we want for full-day kindergarten, because that helps them take the data and tell us where those incoming kindergarteners live, and what physical buildings they would feed into if we're doing it at every school, or where they would be traveling to if we created a kindergarten center, for example. And again, the enrollment study will have different impact as the demographers are working on half-day numbers than if they're working on full-day kindergarten numbers. That changes that enrollment projections. We also need to bring the board some financing and bond sale options, should that be something that we're going to need to continue to consider. A communication plan for possible referendum, if that again is a financing option that we believe will need to pursue. Timeline considerations, so for example, anybody that needs to put a referendum on the ballot this summer, needs to have that information into the election authority by mid-April. Or if it's on the ballot by next November, there are specific dates in the early fall that we'd have to have that information finalized. And we'll also be bringing you some alternate plans. So if, what we're sharing with you tonight is the assumption that full-day kindergarten would be offered cost-free to all families and students that qualify, so live in the district and turn the age five by September 1st of a school year. But we'll also be bringing you at the next committee of the whole meeting, some alternative plans if that doesn't look feasible. Alternate plans can be a variety of things, but to give you one example, something like, well, we know we have five classrooms open across the district, so let's do a lottery and charge a tuition for the families that choose that. So we'll have a variety of alternatives for you. And again, this is just a reminder of some things that we know you don't have all that information on yet, but we'll be bringing to you at the March meeting, but the talk, the conversation tonight can impact what that information is that we're able to provide you. So tonight, we're going to share kind of five-plus options for you. We're going to talk about elementary school building additions at all seven of our elementaries, kind of a secondary option where we build on to some of those elementaries. We're going to talk to you about some, the conversation the board had a little bit about of, what if you built an addition on to a school on the north end of our district and on the south end, and maybe kind of recalibrated where students attended. We're going to talk to you about the small conversation we had about what if you moved fifth grade to Thomas and fifth grade to South, opening up those classrooms at elementary schools? What would that look like? What would that cost? What are the impacts of that? We're going to talk about all those things for if we were to build a kindergarten center, and also talk about if we added a new elementary school in the district. Again, costs, implications, pros, challenges from those situations. As a reminder, and I think many of you maybe weren't here, but I know you've reviewed all the material from the past, in 2016 and 17, when we did survey the community, and I think it was 61% said we want full-day kindergarten, we asked them to tell us what were kind of the main things they wanted us to really stick to, and one of those main parameters was to have full-day kindergarten at each home elementary school. So again, that's been 2016, 17, since we did that survey. So we'd have a new group of families, and maybe there's a difference, but that was one of the top three interests that our community had at that time. And as you'll see through our discussion today, that I would also recommend that option. It's the least disruptive to our community. It's the least cost financially to the community. But again, there are pros and cons to all scenarios, so we'll try to review those with you today. So, as a reminder, we talked about full-day kindergarten for some really important reasons. It would help provide us with some supports in creating well-rounded students, increase flexibility and opportunities for individualized instruction for our youngest ones, options, opportunities for more individual and small group interactions, additional social emotional learning for our kindergarteners, and much easier scheduling of specialized services because we'd have a longer amount of time to schedule them in. It has benefits to teachers because our amazing teachers would have more time with their students to assess them, to individualize their instruction for their needs and their interests. And it causes fewer total students per year to focus on for a teacher, again, giving them an opportunity for greater individualization. Advantages for our family, we know it has a big impact on lowering childcare costs for our families, and great opportunity for our lower-income families to receive higher quality early education. And it allows the ability for both parents to remain in the workforce if they choose to do that. For our community as a whole, it provides increased services to our community. We believe it results in a higher-rated school system, and very likely has a positive impact on property values as well, when you own a home in a school district that has that full-day opportunity for their community. A little more detail of some of the scenarios that we're going to share with you. Scenario number one, neighborhood school additions. We've split this into two possibilities for you. The first one, looking at building on all seven elementary schools to add capacity. Ryan will go through the details with you, but we'll of course need to review small group and breakout instruction needs, review the gym needs of increasing enrollment in kindergarten, review our lunchroom needs, look at do we have ample office space for service providers, and review some of our wellness rooms that we provide for kids. The second scenario, also neighborhood school additions, but build on at schools that currently do not have available capacity. So that's five of our schools, because we believe currently Greenbrier does have capacity to increase to full-day kindergarten. Ivy Hill currently has capacity to increase to full-day kindergarten. Again, there's some what-ifs there that we'll share as we go down the road. But Dryden, Olive, Patton, Westgate, and Windsor, we do not believe have capacity currently to add full-day kindergarten. And of course, we'll talk some more about Westgate, which is really a school that is a priority we need to watch for enrollment, and their needs at that school may be beyond just kindergarten classes, but some other spaces as well. Well, we view the second option of adding on to a north school, on a south school, and then looking at how that would cause redistricting to pull enrollment out of some of our buildings to better accommodate full-day kindergarten at those schools. So it's building on in two places and then kind of redistricting some of the elementary, other elementary schools to open up space there. We'll look at the fifth grade additions at Thomas and South and what that would entail. Again, we've got some specifics for you, or closer to specifics on a new kindergarten center, and again, also a new elementary school, which again, would cause some redistricting if you open this facility, for example, as a elementary school again, and you start to move some children from the south end of this building, it then causes kind of a domino effect across the district. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan to go through some of the details.
I just first want to go through the summary of spaces one more time. Again, this was included in the last committee of the whole meeting. I just want to point out, the two numbers that we're really focusing on here are the potential number of sections of classrooms that are needed for kindergarten. Again, that is overall, that's the whole district, how many classes we would need for kindergarten based on the current enrollment projection of 625. So, the 33 number is how many classrooms we need to cross the district. Bless you. So, again, if we add on to schools, we want to get to that number. If we build a new elementary school or kindergarten center, that's closer to the number we're going to need at that building. More for a kindergarten center, if we take a kindergarten center, the whole kindergarten center will need to accommodate that whole number for pulling all the kindergarten out of the buildings. And again, if we go back to just the classroom short, where we're doing the additions at the building, we're approximately 20 short. On the last presentation, at 19, we do believe we'd need one more at Westgate for sure for the IS program. So that's why I got bumped up by one for right now until we start working through some of those details. But do want to just point out again, a kindergarten center, 33 is the number. If we're building on to buildings, it's closer to the 20 number currently. Just want to give a brief overview of the costs that we'll be reviewing related for each of the scenarios. Again, one A is adding on to all the elementary schools regardless if they need it or not, just to give capacity for future, so that's kind of forward-thinking. We don't believe at this time that all the buildings would require it. Again, Ivy Hill and Greenbrier currently appear to be able to fit the enrollment that would be needed, so that's why option 1B would take those two out of the scenarios for additions and reduce the cost, the one-time cost currently. Not to say that we won't be here in a couple of years if enrollment rebounds at those schools, or it's needed at Greenbrier, but that is just an option that is available at the time, that we wouldn't have to do all the additions year one. Option two is again, we picked Patton and Dryden for the north school, south school addition scenario. Again, that could be vetted out if there's a different location, but it just seemed the most logical at this point, based on the size of the schools, the size of the sites, and how that would fit into the existing school scenario. Option three, again, is the middle school fifth grade additions at both Thomas and South. The additions are a little bit bigger in square footage, because middle schools have a little bit wider hallways, they have lockers, they have some specials classrooms, bigger bathrooms, things like that, that kind of come into account with a middle school addition. Option four is the new kindergarten center that would have to be built, most likely on one of our existing sites. The thing that kind of came up when we were going through this a little bit more is the kindergarten center is typically a one-story building, so it takes up a large site footprint, so it spreads out pretty quickly. So we'll have to review that a little bit more to see how it would fit on a site if we decide to go that route, because it does start sprawling pretty quickly. And the final option is a new elementary school. I'll get into the numbers of how many classrooms, but a mid-to-m smaller-sized elementary school, again, would have to redistrict, pull enrollment out of existing buildings, and determine where that would best fit, where they would come from to fill that elementary school that would make capacity for the kindergarten programs throughout the district. So again, first one is the neighborhood school additions. Let me get back here. So these are just again, some schematic concept drawings on where potential additions can go. A lot of things need to be scoped out yet on this. Again, is there additional mechanical space that's needed, storage space, offices, things like that. So really, this first pass, we're really just looking at classrooms, right? So classrooms and hallway spaces that would be necessary for these, the programs. Again, there's a lot of things that need to be vetted out if we go down this route. So this is again, a preliminary assessment of where they would go, and a rough cost of what that looks like, again, just for the classrooms. So Dryden, the first one at the top left, would require two classrooms right now, and just above it as well would be a gym expansion. The reason for the gym expansion is Dryden currently shares their gym and common space in one area, so if we have additional enrollment, we most likely would want to free up an extra section of the gym, so they could teach PE easily and not have to tear it down all the time, and have more flexibility in their commons and gym spaces. So, it is shown, it's all gray, but there is an addition of the gym in addition to two classrooms. Greenbrier, again, this is a scenario that we showed, showing two additional classrooms, the next one to the right, two additional classrooms. We set the addition up previously to accept additional classrooms. We could put a two-story addition there, but at this time, we would do a one-story with the capability of going up, so we'd put a pre-cast concrete roof on and be able to go up in the future if it would come. But again, since at this time, we're on the borderline of even needing it, and right now, the two classrooms seem to be the scenario we'd look at if we'd go that route, we would look to do a one-story, two-classroom addition there. Ivy Hill, as we previously relayed, has a number of classrooms that are currently open, so we would probably not propose that at this time, but again, showing that four classrooms could be added, kind of where the kindergarten classroom door is now, it's on the north side of the building. We'd probably reconfigure it a little bit from that schematic to allow a hallway out to the north, but again, it shows that our site has plenty of space to accommodate additional four classrooms. Down on the lower left in the black box are two options for Olive, Mary Stitt, both containing four classrooms. One would be adding additional classrooms out into the main, I call it like the plaza area where you walk up to the building, adding two classrooms there, plus an additional classroom to offset where we'd have to remove the art or music room to get a hallway out there. So, kind of turns into three classrooms being built in that location, and then two out to the west. The thing with Olive, if you remember back from our additions previously, the site is extremely tight. To the east side, right directly to the east side in the parking lot, are the village utilities such as sewer, electric, gas, water. We've done some studies, and we'd probably be looking at close to a million dollars or so to relocate those utilities. So we wouldn't want to look to be going further east of the building footprint that we already have. So that's kind of why we had to put the additions where we did, the two separate additions. To the west is Arlington Heights Road. There's a big elevation change there from Arlington Heights Road down to the school. If you're familiar with driving by, you can kind of tell it's kind of set kind of low into the hillside. So the addition on the west side would have to have some additional height or architectural features to make it kind of blend in with the neighborhood. We're assuming that the village would want to ask for something to bring it up in height to make it kind of fit with the Arlington Heights Road elevations of houses and things like that. The one just below it is similar with the addition to the west again, out into the existing playground, but right now, the scenario would put two classrooms in the current existing main office, and then rebuild the main office to offset that space. So that's the major difference on this one, is using the existing office space to offset two classrooms, and then building a new office a little bit out to the northeast of the existing main office to gain that space. So very similar, a lot of things we'd need to work through on this site yet, but again, just two options that we currently first looked at. Patton Elementary School, the plan right in the middle of the page would be looking at two classrooms. We'd probably do something similar at that site by adding a concrete roof so it could go up, because it would attach to a two-story addition. We would like to look to expand the hallway around to make it a loop, so there wouldn't be like a deadened hallway, so it could flow right back to the commons and to the office and gym area. So that's why there'd be a little bit longer hallway in that site. We would want to look at support space for that building to make sure that they have enough offices and other things that are needed for the building. But again, looking to the future, we'd want to make sure that if we go this route, we'd have a concrete roof and be able to go up to a second story at some point in the future. Westgate, this is the one that we need to pay attention to the most for a lot of different reasons, both for enrollment and the programs that they have at the building. So currently, we have projected a three-classroom addition that is set up near the playground area of the existing building. And also, not shown in this drawing, but included in the estimated costs are a gym expansion, so it'd be similar to the expansion we did at Windsor several years ago, where we took half the gym and then expanded out from that side and doubled it up by expanding that to the gym. So this scenario- So this scenario, again, the, the schematic drawing does not show the addition, but the costs do contain some money in there for the gym expansion. The final one on the bottom in the middle is Windsor Elementary School. Again, the addition that was done several years ago, we set it up so it can be turned up towards the north and another addition could be put on to start closing it off and creating another courtyard. This scenario again would contain three classrooms, would again have to look at support space. The hallway would connect the building off and allow some access back to the main office, uh, so they wouldn't have to travel so far around the building. And also again, we'd look to add a concrete roof that would be able to accept an additional second floor in the future if it would warrant it. So again, this is, um, all seven scenarios, all seven buildings, uh, very preliminary schematics on where additions could go. Again, just based on some historical costs, um, we'd be looking at the price range of between twenty-four and thirty million dollars. Again, there's stuff that needs to be vetted out, HVAC systems, if they can all accommodate the additions, boilers, air handlers, all those types of things, electrical, gas, site utilities, a lot of things that would need to be vetted out to determine this. But just based on historical costs, we feel comfortable at this time, uh, with a price range of twenty-four to thirty million dollars, depending on which, where your site comes in. Um, another thing that, other considerations are the annual operating costs that Stacy presented last time. Would anticipate a one-point-four million dollar annual operating cost for this scenario. And again, once we get into this a little bit more, we'll kind of lock in the furniture costs, technology costs, move costs, copier costs, et cetera, that would be associated with this addition. I'll turn it over to Dr. Byan to walk through.
Thanks, Ryan. And then, you know, just, uh, some of the real positive aspects of this, um, option is full-day kindergarten then occurs at everybody's homeschool, their community school where they chose to live. Um, there's no redistricting, uh, throughout the district, no disruption of other programs. Uh, there's a decrease, as Stacy said before, in transportation needs because full-day kindergarten would need only two buses instead of three that we have for a half-day. Um, it, some questions or challenges that we might have, it could result in a small number of unassigned rooms at two schools. Um, we're not concerned about that, right? We know, um, preschool is down the road in the United States. We could always offer, um, tuition-based or if it's funded statewide, preschool, or use those rooms for other uses. Uh, we know, as Ryan mentioned, Westgate is something that we need to look at, um, even in a larger situation than just classrooms. And we need to monitor the Olive enrollment as we're watching that enrollment, uh, go up, uh, recently.
Yeah, one final thing with this with Westgate is the, the building renovation costs, the existing building renovation costs are not contained in the numbers. We will continue carrying those in our capital expenditure costs for the time being. But again, if there's future bond or referendum talk, we'll talk about that, how that would blend together at some point. But just want to make clear that there's no, like, major whole building renovation costs included, uh, for Westgate in here right now. We're carrying that in the other bucket right now. Again, don't want to spend too long on this one. The only thing we're doing is taking out, uh, Greenbrier and Ivy Hill for the time being just because of the building, uh, space needs that we currently have at those buildings. Uh, and taking those into account, uh, the cost comes down from the previous slide down to about twenty to twenty-five million dollars, uh, for those. And I don't know, Dr. Byan, do you have any other thoughts on those?
And again, some of the same, full-day kindergarten at home schools, no redistricting, no disruption. This is the lowest cost option for our community, um, again, a decrease in transportation. The same questions about Westgate, uh, and about Olive's enrollment. The other big question here is Ivy Hill's enrollment. That's where we've seen the largest decrease in enrollment, uh, during the pandemic. Um, and we really don't know, is that going to rebound? Um, so, uh, the enrollment that we've seen over the last couple of years at Ivy is completely different trend uh, than we've seen at Ivy, um, over the past ten-plus years. Um, and so if we go with, uh, an option like this and say that we're not going to build on to Ivy right now because it, we would be able to fit full-day kindergarten, we may be coming back to the board a year or two later if we see what's a more typical enrollment for Ivy, uh, snap back. But again, it's just an unknown at this time.
Uh, the next option is additions at a northern school and a southern school. The scenario we put together, again, we did not put a drawing together for this yet. If this decides to go more, we'll put together further. Uh, again, twenty total classrooms, approximately ten at Patton for this scenario and ten at Dryden, uh, just to give us extra capacity, so there would need to be some redistricting to pull out of schools that are getting full, uh, to get into these scenarios. So again, about a four-hundred-and-fifty student capacity, and that's using our average of about twenty-two and a half, you know, taking the twenty-five of a fifth grade and twenty of a kindergarten, so twenty-two and a half students a classroom, uh, and coming up with that scenario. Uh, Dryden Elementary School again would be considering the gym expansion, uh, to give them space in their commons and their gym. And then Patton, we'd be looking at a gym expansion and most likely a commons expansion there as well. What we did at Windsor is we took some of the storage areas around the commons away and repurposed them in the new addition. Uh, that most likely, if we would go to this scenario, would need to be completed at Patton as well. So, uh, again, high level, starting to look at this using square footage-based scenarios for this. Uh, price range of twenty-one million to twenty-seven million, uh, if we would start looking at a scenario like this.
Some of the text on the side, this still allows full-day kindergarten at all home schools and doesn't disrupt other programs. Um, it relieves space pressure, um, at some of our schools, but not all of them. Um, as we looked at which students from a high level might redistrict, uh, we know that this redistricts at least four communities, um, by doing this. Um, it does not address the full district need, so there are still other schools that would still need, need additions in addition to building at these two sites. Um, and it relocates many of our staff, so that's just a piece we need to be aware of. That's a, a piece of that as it does change the location, uh, pretty significantly for many of our teachers.
Uh, the next option is option three, middle school additions at both Thomas and South for fifth grade. So again, moving fifth grade from the elementary schools and up to the middle schools, what that'll do is take all the fifth grade sections out of the elementary schools, free up that space for the kindergarten sections to come and backfill. And then fifth graders again would attend, uh, the two middle schools for the fifth to eighth grade experience. Sorry? Oh, it's a click and all, sorry. Is that it? That's it, right? Uh, yeah, so option three, again, as showed the last time, the schematics on potential where the additions could go, we would work through it a lot more. Uh, South seems very logical on the addition there. Thomas would take a little bit more with stormwater, the parking lot, uh, configuration with fields and things like that, but easily could work through that, uh, if that's the option to go, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Byan.
Again, some possible positive outcomes of this, again, there's no redistricting that occurs. Um, and maybe since I keep saying that, I'll kind of give the board some history. Uh, the district do, did go through, um, some redistricting, I believe around two thousand and seven or right before then. Um, and members who were on that board would tell you that there were many more community members attending board meetings and upset than even we've seen during the pandemic, uh, as families were very unhappy feeling that they chose their home based on the schools that were in the community at that time. So redistricting is, is definitely an option when school districts are growing in enrollment or needing to make some changes. Uh, but it typically is very unpopular and one that makes your homeowners, uh, in most situations, very unhappy. So that's why I'm putting that as something to be aware of. Um, it does, could provide our fifth grade with the transition opportunities with middle school. So typically when you move something like fifth grade to a middle school, you still kind of have, it's like your own little fifth grade center, uh, right? There's still some elementary pieces that are appropriate for them, but you can then begin to expose them um, to some of the great things about middle school as well in a transition mode. Um, there's plenty of space on the South property, uh, there is space available on the Thomas property. Again, some questions, uh, it may leave some excess rooms at some of our elementary schools that would be underutilized. Again, we feel there's always ways to fill rooms and even to, uh, get some revenue through those opportunities. Uh, it increases enrollment of two-hundred-and-fifty students to three-hundred students at each middle school. Uh, so that can be a significant number to be aware of. We, because of that, we'd likely need two additional administrators. Um, each of our middle schools right now basically has three grades, three administrators. Um, and so we'd likely need to add, whether it's an associate principal or a dean or something like that, to help with that increased enrollment. Uh, there will be a traffic impact, uh, at South and Thomas. Again, lots of opportunities, we could talk about, do they go on the middle school schedule or are they still on a elementary schedule? And that doesn't have as big of an impact on transportation or traffic. Um, we have heard some community concerns, uh, regarding, uh, fifth grade joining middle school level. Um, we don't have any data behind how big that concern is at that point, but it's something that we heard when we put it out there originally. Um, and again, it relocates, um, many of our staff members.
Yeah, some of the other considerations, again, the annual operating cost estimate is about two million dollars. Uh, this, again, scenario would contain lockers, wider hallways, science rooms, special rooms, lunch space, uh, move costs, furniture costs, et cetera, that would have to be blended in there. Again, some of those top ones are considered in here. I just want to make you aware that that's why the cost for this scenario may be a little bit more is taking some of those into account. So this is the pricing scenario for the additions containing South and, uh, Thomas, approximately between thirty-one and thirty-nine million dollars for the additions. Uh, the screenshot on the right of the floor plan is actually a South, that's South's third floor, uh, that is their eighth grade. So that, that's again, the floor plan we'd be kind of be looking for, take a recapture for another grade coming up there is real similar to that, right? So that's why we use that as the baseline for the design and square footage. Uh, we feel that that'd be a comfortable setting for a fifth-grade classroom setup. Uh, again, that's for South, again, the, the one at Thomas may look a little bit different, but square footage-wise, we'd probably be looking to be real similar in size, uh, for the additions. I just did a quick analysis on this to, uh, just to try to vet out how many rooms would be left over at each building and percentages of, uh, each building. Actually, the, that's maybe one of the positives of this scenario is that the buildings will kind of get a little more comfortable. Uh, if you look far to the right, the occupancy rate of the schools would be in some, again, Ivy Hill is an outlier right now with their enrollment, but be in the eighties, mid-eighties to ninety percent, uh, give us a little bit of space for specials or, uh, resource rooms, things like that at the buildings uh, by taking the fifth grade out because they have, uh, quite a few sections right now, right? They might have four or five sections, whereas right now we might only have two kindergarten rooms. So by freeing up that, we'll give space for kindergarten and we might have a couple extra leftover. Uh, so that, that is one positive of this scenario moving up to fifth grade is that the buildings in theory will feel a little bit more comfortable with occupancy rates, uh, for setups. The next scenario is a kindergarten center. Again, just did a quick analysis of how many rooms we'd be looking for. Again, if we have six-hundred-and-twenty-five students at twenty per class, we'd have thirty-one classrooms with an enrollment buffer of approximately four classrooms, just so if we had some space, uh, it'd be around thirty-five classrooms. So a building kind of comes out to being about the size of Ivy Hill Elementary School right now with thirty-four classrooms and around seventy-seven thousand square feet of floor space. Uh, again, on the right is just showing a real high-level concept of a school that our architect has done before in a kindergarten scenario, one floor. Again, we could look at sizes of spaces, but again, just kind of a layout, uh, orientation of a one-story school building and looking at a cost range of between thirty-four and forty-four million dollars. Again, additional considerations are the operating costs associated with that, uh, new administration staff, support staff, things like that that would be needed to support a new standalone building. Again, additional furniture costs, technology costs, things like that that we'd have to add in as well, uh, for one-time costs.
And because of full-day kindergarten center takes up seventy-seven thousand square feet, I had to put these parts on their own slide. Um, some of the pros and questions, um, one of the positive things of a kindergarten center is it has an all-school focus completely on early learners, right? So everyone, every staff member in that building is focusing on that age level and how early learners, uh, learn and grow. Um, increases the connections of families across the district. So you meet families that live in all of the communities because all seven of those elementary communities have their kindergarteners go together. So it does expand that across-district connection for families. Um, and I don't remember why I put this, I think it was because we could add it here under the Dutton Administration Center, uh, on this site if that was where we decided to do it and, and have an administration center connected, um, to a kindergarten. That would be great for all of us because we would love to be around them, um, but you could combine those two pieces. Some questions or challenges, it needs additional staff, right? Whenever you build a new school, it needs an administrator, nurse, maintenance, uh, possibly their own support staff. Um, it creates a possible third school for families with multiple children in District Twenty-Five, right? There's some in here now if they have an early childhood stu, student, um, but that is a smaller number. Um, so it would mean if I'm a family and I have a kindergartner and a second grader and a sixth grader, I'm at three schools, um, just in my elementary district. Uh, it does need a referendum if you build brand-new. Um, you can build on as an addition by law without a referendum, but to build a school, uh, brand-new, even if you had all the money to build it, you have to go to referendum to build, um, a brand-new building. Again, if we add it on to one of our current facilities, we wouldn't need approval to do that. Um, we may see additional costs, uh, again, if, if the district, uh, Dutton staff needs to relocate. So if we use this for part of the full-day kindergarten and we need to move the offices elsewhere, we need to look at that cost as well. Um, operating costs again are higher because you need new staff, et cetera, in a new building. Uh, transportation needs, uh, increase, but can be offset by the decrease in the no-longer-need-ing mid-day runs, right? But if you're now transporting all kindergartners to one specific area, right? Where you may not need to transport, uh, at some of the schools in their homeschool. Um, so we need, we increase our need for transportation, but again, offset by not needing a middle-of-the-day to-and-from run. And again, the one-story school takes up a large, uh, land space, so you have to have a large enough space for that.
The final scenario is a new elementary school, and again, site to be determined, but a new elementary school that would be used to pull enrollment out of the existing schools. Uh, looking to recommend a twenty-four-classroom school plus a two, uh, enrollment buffer, so it would become a twenty-six total school. Uh, so looking at a four-sections-per-grade and plus the two enrollment buffer, approximately a five-hundred-student enrollment at twenty-two and a half students per class. Uh, the most similar-sized school right now is Greenbrier, so approximately seventy thousand square feet in area. So that again is just the floor plan from Greenbrier, a lot of changes could happen at that. Uh, price range of thirty-four to forty-three million dollars for a brand-new standalone building, uh, somewhere in the district. Again, could look at various sites if that was the option to look for. Again, would require redistricting in order to get students into that new school.
And again, um, it does lessen enrollment at other schools, bringing up some space there. It creates another neighborhood school location, which could be a positive for a community to have something closer than they currently do. Um, that new school community gets to build their culture right from the beginning on um, and really be a part of creating, uh, not just the physical structure, but the morale and, and the internal culture of that building. Um, some questions, it does again need additional staff, it has to have its own principal, its own nurse, someone for facilities, support staff as well. It does redistrict likely all seven communities, um, again, depending on where you put it. Um, and if you're moving kids all down one direction, then the rest are, are funneling down as well. Um, there are some staff transfers, of course, that would happen. Uh, we talked about referendum if you're building brand-new, um, and again, that we'd, could see some, um, Dutton staff cost to relocate Dutton.
So yeah, just a summary of the budget costs that I went through at the beginning, going through, uh, again, the redistricting. One B, because that is the most cost-effective measure for the time being, not to say that we would not be back in several years to do additions at some point.
Oh, Ryan, can you work on your mic?
Sorry. Uh, again, not to say that we would be back in several years to do additions at Ivy and Greenbrier. Uh, but again, just want to highlight that would be the most current cost-effective measure. Uh, but all the other options have different pluses and minuses that, uh, Dr. Byan went through. Uh, so these are, again, are just baseline schematic drawing, cost estimates on what the scenarios would most likely cost, uh, in their current state.
And then we've just listed some next steps, and as we mentioned, we really need to begin finalizing one option. So we have better scope development, design, and additional pricing exercises to go through. Um, we then need to dig into site surveys for that selected option. Traffic studies would need to be done this spring, um, for the selected options. Uh, it does take between six to eight months for design and village, uh, permit review and approval. Um, and as I mentioned, um, but, you know, we know that there's a lot the board still needs to see. Um, and so we do plan to bring you, um, a lot more comprehensive information at that March eighth committee of the whole. Um, but each of those things can, uh, be a bit different on what we share with you based on the conversation that happens today. The other things that, um, Stacy provided in the board- The other things that Stacy provided in the board's materials for you, Stacy, do you want to talk about the tax rate information?
Sure. At the last meeting, we had, I presented information on our property tax, and there was discussion about our community being one of the highest taxed communities in the state. So I looked at, and that may be including every tax that's paid, but I did look at the overlapping property tax rates, what appears on a property tax bill, and provided, I had a conversation actually with Greg about it, so wanted to make sure all the board members had the same information. So the summary chart is just the 2020 average composite property tax rates because, for example, Arlington Heights, you may be part of Wheeling Township, you may be part of Elk Grove Township, you may be, so the Cook County website actually provides us data. So these are the averages for all of our surrounding communities. But again, it doesn't include anything like sales tax, or it's strictly just the property tax rate. And then the other spreadsheet is the backup data for that chart I shared in the last committee, the whole meeting, that showed the trend lines of the property tax rates for all of the District 214 feeder districts. It's just the actual rate data that backs up that chart.
So with a lot of information shared too, we would love to hear questions, thoughts, conversation.
Yes, Gina.
First question. On the option of Dutton, how many square feet is this building compared to the desire to put a 77,000-square-foot building if we were to build new?
Yeah, this building is 32,000 square feet, approximately, I believe, 19 classrooms right now. So that's the current setup. Again, small, multipurpose room, a lot of things that would need to be additionally added on.
So Dutton as an option would be Dutton plus
Yes.
an addition.
For sure.
Okay. Next. What about the buildings that the district owns that are currently rented out?
So those, we have two. So we basically have three structures that we own. Dutton, Minor, which currently houses our facilities and is leased both by Mother's Touch Daycare and NSSEO, their minor school program is there. And then Rand, which is currently leased a portion of it by Futubakai Japanese School, and then we have some facilities, things there as well.
Size-wise, Minor, I believe, is 77,000 square feet. I don't know the number of classrooms off the top of my head. It used to be a junior high school. And then Rand is 83,000 square feet. Again, I don't recall the classroom count, but again, probably be close to be an offset some of that classroom space.
And do we know what the costs would be if we were to contemplate Rand or Minor considering the space-wise fit the bill, quality of the building, of the facility, the required upgrades, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, if we were to look at?
Yeah, I don't off the top of my head. Again, it would be significantly less at Minor, I believe. Right, there's a lot of life safety stuff that needs to be done. New windows, new boilers, new air conditioning, new unit ventilators, new flooring, like, it's pretty much starting over from scratch on finishes and equipment-wise. So we could look at that as an option. Again, both those buildings do need considerable amounts of upgrades.
Yeah, I just want to preface, that path, you could almost ignore the costs for a moment and really have continued dialogue at this table around, do we even want to consider options four or five? Because only options four or five would lend to those scenarios. But, great points.
And then the last question I had is if we did the Dutton office and we relocated the admin team, hypothetically, that would be like an add-on somewhere else, pick, insert building here, right?
Could be. It could be running office space.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood what it meant by moving the admin team, what that could incur.
I was just going to make one point, Ryan, and I would assume it would be forthcoming anyhow. I just wanted to, you know, have it on paper. You know, whatever scenario, hopefully or scenarios we leave tonight with, across all of them, you highlighted that there's furniture cost implications, technology cost implications, move cost implications, and copier cost implications. So if it's feasible for the next meeting, in alignment with whatever one or two scenarios we wind up with, I'd like to see some rough dollars on those.
Yeah, I think at the last one, we gave rough furniture costs, I believe. So we would vet those out a little bit more for each one. Obviously, there's more rooms in one scenario than the other, so we'll let that out on new furniture needs.
Yeah, I think that would be more incremental than
Right.
probably rounding for some of the stuff. And we probably have enough furniture and storage already from, sorry.
I don't, I wouldn't think so.
Okay, all right. Not with the current status from the pandemic on the amount of furniture that we needed for it. We definitely would not have enough furniture.
Mr. President, I had some initial thoughts, Ryan. I think it's great that the board wanted to think outside the box and really look at all the solutions and options, but also taking into consideration that there is a timeline. You know, our community has been waiting a very long time for full-day kindergarten. We have some decisions to move as far as getting, if we need to go to referendum, getting things onto a ballot and so forth. So it's great that we looked at these options and you turned around really quickly and giving us, looking at all these options, giving us all these opportunities to consider different things, right? But the way I look at it, these are my initial thoughts, and it's up to discussion, is that option 1A, for me, in having thought about it, looking at everything, listening to Dr. Byrne and kind of even community input, is that option 1A is forward-thinking and most cost-effective because we do have unknowns in those buildings, right, as far as demographics and populations with not knowing what's going to be happening with the numbers at buildings like Ivy. And then option 1A is also a community-centered option in keeping school communities and families together and the least disruptive as far as there's a lot of emotion and disruption that's caused by redistricting. So the other option concerns me in kind of the redistricting and the negatives that come with that for a community like Arlington Heights. And option 1A is also fiscally responsible as we look down the summary of estimated costs. It's the lowest cost, taking into consideration keeping school communities together and thinking about being solutions-driven in the future. So, and really, the redistricting options are, and you know, even just don't appeal to me at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yeah, yes.
So a couple of things on the middle school additions, just want to make sure because it's not really clear, but if we went down the route of adding to the middle school additions, does this current layout consider lunch, gym, all those things that would actually, because it's not really in there, but I don't know
Yeah, we
capacity to handle that?
High-level, we believe lunch would work. The PE space would need a second look to look at that to make sure that there would be enough sections of PE. Again, the scheduling may help get that to work by having the fifth graders start at the typical elementary's time and stay a little bit later, like past the current middle school bell. That may work, but it will definitely need some more exploration on gym space, for sure. But again, we believe lunch space is most likely going to work.
Okay. Because I, I mean, I, from, just to your point, Alicia, what I like about this option is it's forward-thinking from another perspective that really it takes the fifth graders, I realize, they're going to be going to South or Thomas in the next year, but I think that the reality that as I look at it from the perspective, it opens up all of our other schools to significantly give us that opportunity. If we see the growth that we potentially expect, and we're not going to be back here in three years saying, hey, we just spent this much and now we need to add on these additional schools. I understand this, we got some feedback that some parents were worried about, but a fifth grader in their own building and they're a little bit different. I would argue from my perspective that this is really a, it's not the most inexpensive, but it is giving us technically the ability of every home school to really have expansion potential for the future. Just my perspective.
Frank?
Yes, Richard.
Just a couple of questions. Can you go to slide eight? Now we just ran a line. So I'm looking at this, the cost there on slide eight, just so that I'm understanding. One more back, sorry. Too far. Okay. Just help me understand, you know, I know we looked at Greenbrier and Ivy. There's a marked difference in cost, right? So in Ivy, we're adding four classrooms for 1.8, Greenbrier, two classrooms at 1.3, Dryden, two classrooms at 3.4. It's, what's the, I mean?
Yeah, it's some of the space that I gave for hallways
Okay.
that are in there and that air handler space, just to make sure that we have space for air handler.
Okay, so Ivy has all that?
I felt some.
Got it, okay.
And Dryden, I would need additional gym space.
Okay, all right. Let's see. Oh, and OMS, why wouldn't we build up an Ald?
They did four, that's four. Again, you'd have to close
I ain't so tight, I mean, there's
Yeah, you'll have to close that, keep that waiting.
Yeah.
It's not capable of it right now, so I didn't have additional structural skill put in.
Okay.
Again, whatever we offset below that, it's going to have to be closed, either on that modular or whatever, it's a nice space.
Okay. Now, you mentioned Westgate, that there's other things needed at Westgate that aren't included in here. You're coming separately to that, but what are just some of those things?
Yeah, I didn't finish that. Was, again, we planned to do that last time.
I'm not the microphone expert here, apparently. We planned to do some of those last summer at Westgate, some of the renovations, including air handler upgrades, flooring upgrades, finish upgrades, lighting upgrades, galvanized piping upgrades throughout the whole building, trying to get that up to a current district standard throughout.
Okay. So, and maybe Laurie to you. So we talked about adding admin if we do a centralized, you know, north-south, you know, added more into fifth grade and to Thomas and to South. Do we need to add any more administrators to any of the other buildings then? Is it, or is it neutral at that point?
No, I would not say it's neutral, right? Our elementary schools either have one and a half administrators or two, and they would still need those to cover student enrollment and program, the variety of programs that they have. And again, our initial thought would be, it would be another associate principal at each of the middle schools, but we could redefine that too, right? There's a dean or whatever it is, but there would definitely need, they'd be getting, you know, Thomas or South would be getting 250 to 300 new students. An elementary school might be losing because they're coming from four elementary schools, so they're not, each elementary school's not losing 250 to 300.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, so it would be adding that on each of the middle schools.
Okay. And then, Ryan, you talked about that the operating cost for that, for adding on to South and Thomas is 2 million, but what's, you know, if we build on to every school, there's an increase of operating costs anyway, so what is, is that a wash as well?
So I have that if we built on all seven schools, we'd be looking about 1.4 million in additional operating costs. If we built on to the, or moved fifth grade to the middle schools, it's about 2 million a year. There'd actually be some savings by consolidation of fifth grade and grade level classroom sizes. However, we, as indicated, we anticipate we'd probably need an additional administrator that we didn't anticipate. If we built on at every school, we may or may not need additional nursing help for an additional 250 to 300 kids, possibly an additional administrative assistant help, especially if we have them at, starting at different times. If we had fifth grade start at the regular time, their days are different, so therefore we'd have some staff coverage issues. And then just utility costs because the overall square footage is different. So all of that is factored in there. So it's about $600,000 difference annually.
The, in terms of looking at buildings, so obviously we have an option to build on at every school. We have an option then to build on at north and south, and then, you know, basically retrofit Dutton here. What would be fastest? Like, if we said go, right? Let's just say we're making the decision tonight, what would be, what would get us there the fastest?
I think the middle school option may be the quickest, just because it probably wouldn't impact the main school thing. The thing that would come into it is the gym on how we, if the gym is needed, where can we add it on? It would impact the existing gym. I think that it's more efficient that way, just having two sites for site supervision for construction and things like that, having just two sites instead of somebody having to run around between all four. Not to say that's going to play into the overall construction, but I think for getting through village approval, only having two sites makes it more palatable to get through zoning and architectural review and things like that. Because again, if we're adding on all seven, we're going to have seven communities coming and inputting on the designs and
Yeah.
traffic and all that. So again, if we consolidate to less, I think that may move it a little faster. Not to say that it's going to be huge material difference, but some of those things during the planning and design phases might speed things up a little bit by having less sites.
But, so am I reading this correctly? The middle school option is approximately $10 million more?
More than option 1A?
Yeah, again, roughly at this point, based on looking at the scenarios, we would obviously vet through that more if that's the option we consider and try to lock that number in better. But again, high-level, yes, right now.
And Ryan, so the middle school option also would not address other needs that we may wrap into construction at each school, correct?
Right, yeah. We're still talking two separate things, right? We're talking capital improvements for those types of improvements that we've talked about in the five-year plan, and then these costs would be one-time costs, so
Yeah. And so you showed us on, in the middle school slide, like the percent capacity impact on how it would create room. So when we're talking about building on to each elementary school, when, if that 1A was the option, are we at 95% each elementary? Are we at?
Yeah, it varies, again, by school.
Okay.
Westgate is going to potentially, depending on future enrollment, is going to be very close to being fully at. I mean, it's, the three classrooms are really addressing kindergarten, is not going to give them a ton of extra space in the building. And again, it'll flux building by building a little bit on capacity in each building, like you're saying. But again, by looking at the middle school scenario, it does appear that that would give us the most space back in other, in other schools that we could use again for resource, specials, things like that at the elementary schools. So I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, thank you. Looking at, again, Patton and Dryden, that particular piece, was there a reason we chose Patton and Dryden specifically? I know we mentioned that last time, but
Yeah, again, I think just, I think just building, existing building enrollment in their sites. I think that that gave us the most flexibility on the sites. Patton especially, I think that that's a great site that we can add on to. Dryden's a little bit more difficult, but definitely doable. We have plenty of land to the south to try to make that work. So that was it. Again, not to say that we could find another site or move that around a little bit. It just made the most sense at the time.
Not that I want you guys to, you know, doing, you know, the cost, but just from throwing this out as a crazy idea, does it even make sense? Is, well, what if you closed a school and created a larger school? Right? Again, looking at that Patton, north-south, you know, what if you ended up closing Patton? I'm just throwing, I'm not saying, you know, so don't go off in saying I said close Patton or anything like that, you know? But just say, is, you know
Rich, that's your home school.
Yeah, exactly. But if we close Patton, it's just throwing it out there, and we focus our energies on building on maybe Greenbrier or something of that nature that even has better traffic patterns than Patton does.
Yeah.
Does that change anything? Does it materially, you know, would be, change the cost structure materially to look at, or, you know, it's, it's not worth even thinking about from a variety of reasons?
I think the biggest thing we'd first have to look at, decide is how big of an elementary school do we want to get to? I think that if we did that, we'd start getting pretty big. And Dr. Byrne, you can probably speak to that better than I can on sizing of elementary school on what
Right. So for example, if you closed Patton and moved them to Ivy, you're moving over 500 kids to a 250 already student building, right? So you're starting to get to 800. The smallest building enrollment The smallest building enrollment wise is Greenbrier, but it's 250 K5, 400 when you include EC, right? So if you just move even the K5, you're adding 250 kids.
Yeah, no, I mean, you're seeing, does it?
From that perspective, an enrollment perspective, it's more likely if you close a school that you disperse that enrollment in more than one.
Right, right, right.
Location.
But does that add any, does that change the math in this at all? I don't know. I just, that's a, I'm not saying.
Because the only, only point to bring up, right? Redistricting?
But, yeah, I mean, automatically caused.
Well, let's be realistic, you just asked how fast we want to go. We might as well just say this is, this is three years out.
If you're talking about closing a school and redistricting with everybody.
Yeah, that's what I said. Let me just, we're throwing out.
And I think from a cost perspective, you're then rebuilding a full cost of a school.
Yeah.
Somewhere else.
Okay. That, yeah, that's, I just wanted to voice that out.
I'm wondering, I'm sorry.
So, in looking at the new kindergarten center, new elementary school, do we have space? Again, let's exclude Dunton for right now. In these cost projections, if we said, you know, build a new kindergarten center, we'd have to purchase land somewhere.
Yeah, the land purchase in there.
So these costs don't include a purchase of a land?
No, not necessarily. Again, we, South is a potential. Thomas is a potential. I would probably stay away from the minor property just because there's already two sites, schools on that site. It would get pretty traffic heavy and school heavy, it would be like a campus. And then here, I mean, here's the other option, far south. I think our viable options again would be looking at South and Thomas properties to see if that would work. Again, a kindergarten center could still be tough just because of the layout. An elementary school, a two-story, I don't think would be any problem at all. Those sites need to be considered.
So, so I wonder if we should look at this as a multiple choice test, right? And go with the process of elimination here. If, if our board, it seems like, you know, Chad had brought this up as well. If redistricting is not an option, let's throw out options here. Like what involves redistricting? Let's put those out and, if that is our agreement as a board, if redistricting is not an option for us, let's not even talk about any options that talk about redistricting. And then stay with what we have. So let's cross out options or any other ideas that involve redistricting if that, if we're in agreement about that.
So Anisha, you're suggesting that, and I'm agreeing with what you're suggesting is we would throw out options or discard options 2, 4, and 5.
Actually, well, 2 and 5.
2 and 5 are the only.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 2 and 5.
Yep.
Why would, so 4 would not?
No, because you could, that doesn't require.
3, 4 would require redistricting.
You stay at your homeschool for 1 through 5. You just go to, everybody goes to a kindergarten center for kindergarten.
So I guess, yeah, that's that, but I think with the new kindergarten center, okay, so if, maybe we need to agree on that one thing first before we move to another. Another elimination point. So redistricting, yes or no?
I would agree. I would agree. I think I don't want to go through a redistrict personally, so I think we should.
Just as a board member?
As a board member, as anything. I think it should be off the table just from that perspective because I think, I think it's gonna be a bigger issue than we think. And I think timing is really the key here, right? We really have talked about, you know, a year and a, technically a year and a half from now, trying to be like not this next coming school year, the following school year to be active. There's no way we're gonna get that with a redistrict and deal with that and then get this on a ballot and get this through that whole process. So I think it's, I would agree with you, Anisha, I think we should remove it.
One counterpoint to that would be, you know, if we're looking at option 2, right, which would require, you know, let's just look, you know, between option 2 and 4, you know, you're talking a $13 million change. You know, so are we saying, hey, we wouldn't entertain redistricting for $13 million?
And my counter to that is because we have other options that are fiscally responsible that do not require redistricting, as in 1A. If there was no other options out there, then we have to look at redistricting. However, we have great, you know, great options that do not involve redistricting. So we do have options.
So Anisha, I'm, I'm in support of what you've said on that. I think redistricting is problematic. I think it should be a goal to only redistrict as a last resort. I think it is disruptive. I like the Bennett, the, the community centric comment you made about the solution of 1A being the best from the least disruptive to families, keeping the kids in homeschools, the benefits to the community. I would agree with all of that. I'm a little concerned on time to build if we touch all the buildings. And then the only thing I will offer is that I am in favor of 1B over 1A simply for fiscal responsibility, considering everything that has been endured through 2020 and, and 2021 with the global pandemic. So I would be in favor. In addition, when you look at Greenbrier and Ivy, if we needed to build on those later, the cost on those two schools was the, the smallest cost and potentially could be things that could be funded differently than the big bang of the full day kindergarten element. So right now, I'm, I am favoring and leaning towards 1B based on those, those positions.
Ryan, could you, could you, I apologize, I can't find it fast enough. Gina brought up the point of those two schools, if we pulled those out, what would that cost be?
Go to the next slide.
I'm just asking. Roughly, ballpark.
Five, slide 5.
What's up?
5 million.
Yeah.
5 million, 5 million.
Sure, sure. So, thank you Gina for those comments. And I want to express appreciation for Anisha's comments and Gina for clarifying. And, you know, 1A versus B and your thoughts on it. And Chad, I wanted to, you brought, you know, a good point up about, you know, the space that it allows us if we were to look at a fifth grade center. I want to look at this a little differently. You know, we talk about, well, first of all, I have concerns with the cost of the fifth grade addition. I mean, it's, it's, it's significantly more. It's not, you know, the difference between 1A and 1B, I think there's conversation to be had there between those and the benefits and, and all that. I'm just really concerned about that. Also concerned about the, the population growth at one school and what that does to a school culture, what it does to the traffic in that area, the, the neighborhood impact. So, but I, again, Chad, I appreciate you mentioning the benefits because I just hadn't had that look about it. But I still have those concerns. And even though those fifth graders would still matriculate to those schools and were just advancing them a little bit earlier, in a, in a similar, but maybe not as disruptive, but in a similar way, it's like redistrict. It really is. I mean, it changes expectations in the community about how we educate our kids. And we may be heard from those people that that would impact immediately, but we don't know what impact that has long range. We just don't have any measure on it. And that's concerning. So when I'm looking at 1A and 1B, it, we really, we're creating an opportunity. Yes, there could be a timing cost. I, I would like to hear more from Ryan about the differential between those two, like the fifth grade and then all seven schools. So we really have a scope on how much, if at all, will we still meet our desired timelines? But that, then if we are literally going to, looking at every school, and this is one of the questions I had for this evening, at the risk of suggesting much larger costs, we can also look at how programming is addressed in each of those schools. So what other opportunities? And you alluded to it, right? We, we would look at, we have to look at office spaces, correct? We have to look at what other small, how are we gonna impact small group spaces and things like that? Are there opportunities, again, not necessarily adding spaces, but to enhance programs that are already offered? And so if we're looking at each school, and I know you, you made a five-year plan when that's, that's totally separate, I get that. But now we are going, we, we would have a plan to be in each school and just, I don't know, is there more out there that could be discussed or might be revealed in the process, right? I don't know if there's a comment there if you're right or even a question, but that's what's attractive.
Again, I think that's a larger board decision on if there's other things that want to be addressed programmatically in a building, right? That, that would be directed from you on what that would be. I, I don't think the other school, the majority of the schools we've gone through and renovated, I, we tried to knock out some of the bigger things on them. So I don't think we're gonna really expose a, a big find. Again, Westgate, we kind of know some of those costs already that we are gonna address. And then again, the addition will be the addition and we'll take care of that. So again, I don't see major things that we're gonna find. We set up a lot of the additions anticipating future expansion. So I, I don't think that there's gonna be some big unknown that's really gonna come out of these additions that maybe alluded to.
Greg?
I did it, Tor. Can I?
You're right.
Yeah. The other thing, Gina, you were talking about, you know, just the cost and looking at 1B and being, you know, fiscally responsible. This, my next comment applies to the fifth grade and 1B. And I just would like to hear, either hear more or talk about it more, is what Ryan said, you know, even though the, if we break out those two schools, it's 5 and 1/2 million, that's not nothing. And, you know, we're finding the sweet spot for a solution that allows us to address the issues we have now with some measure, a reasonable measure of insurance over future issues, right? So that we don't have to go back again. Maybe there's, you know, if, if I were to hear, well, yeah, 5.5, here's how we might finance that in three years. I don't, I don't know what those options are. That, that would help me better evaluate those two, the A and the B and things. So otherwise, right now, 1A seems like a, a good balance of fiscally responsible, positive impact, least disruptive. It puts all those together because the differential, again, not, nothing between 1A and 1B, but not the difference between 1 and the fifth grade center.
Another piece of the next COW meeting that may help the board if we're looking at two options or what have you is, is a financing plan. And what does the difference between those costs really mean in terms of a yearly cost to homeowners or how long we extend bonds or what have you? So some of that, if we're, if that's becoming our, you know, part that's hard to differentiate, will be even more clear when we do some financing of that. And, and if I could also ask the board at some point to get back to, do you want to eliminate those two?
Yeah, I was gonna go there right now and say, alright, it sounds like 5?
Before we eliminate, I want to interrupt here. Before we eliminate, in looking at, Ryan, in looking at Westgate, right? With renovations needed outside of kindergarten, coupled with the, whatever it is, 3 and 1/2 to 4 and 1/2 million to add these classrooms. Is that, do we need to have a bigger conversation about Westgate before we make a decision about options A versus, 1 versus 5?
Yeah, I.
Because if we sit here and say, oh, we don't want to redistrict and we don't want to build a new school, we don't want to do this, we don't want to do that. And then we take a look at Westgate and go, holy crap, Westgate's gonna take 15 million to save. Well, excuse my language, well, heck, we could have just built a new school for 35. You know what I mean? Like, I feel like there's a, more work to do there and I don't mean to say you need to do more work.
Again, we're kind of leaving that, we're giving you both scenarios on the current, like how we can address it currently. But I do believe that, that's something warranted to look at at that school, just based on layout, that the two buildings were added. And again, if we're gonna be putting that much money into renovations and in addition, does it make sense? So again, look at a new school or to look at tearing down wings and adding on new wings that are bigger and things like that? Like, right, giving us more space, again, with the programs that are at that building, enrollment, things like that.
It's, well, yeah. And I would add to Ryan's conversation that, again, every, you know, we could have 100 options, but if there's expansion needs for Westgate, they could happen, that could happen at Westgate as well, right? And Westgate was one of the schools when we originally looked. We had kind of a Plan A for construction back in 2014, 15 and a, and a Plan B. And Westgate was on the Plan B and then we took it off because we saw enrollment was gonna drop and it has done that. We are seeing some enrollment rebound at Westgate. Again, they still have excellent student to teacher class sizes. But, you know, there is, we could do some renovations and add some space at Westgate as well. But Ryan, are you saying that we really need to leave a new elementary school on the table because of Westgate?
No, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that if, if we're gonna be looking at those costs, I think you want to see that, right? You want to see how much the renovation costs are, how much the addition costs are with the gym, all that. And put that into perspective on the overall building value and cost that there are there for that building, so.
And that's what I'm really asking. Like, I feel like that conversation, I need that conversation before I completely discard the new school option.
Again.
Just as one.
It's different than.
Yeah, and I disagree. I'm wondering if we could have some rough instruments by the next meeting, right? But if, so maybe we make a quasi-decision now to give some direction and then we have that. That might cause us to either confirm or deny. And we have a board meeting coming up and is that, is that able to be presented before the next COW? Just as a, you know, not for a full discussion, but for us to consume that information in the next board meeting?
And I just want to be clear, we're looking at Westgate solely?
What's, what's involved in Westgate? What, you know, this is what's needed, just so that we have context into this. Because maybe an option is, and I'm, again, looking at this, maybe it is option 1A or 1B with a kicker to say, but instead of it being 20 million, it's 25 because we need an extra five to go to Westgate.
Right. If we're adding, I'm thinking the likely, the likely lead here is, oh, okay, now while we're breaking ground at Westgate, now we gotta address.
But I'm with Ryan. If you're coming back and saying we need 20 million into Westgate to do something there, okay, then I'm saying we close Westgate and do something else.
Not jumping to that.
Yeah.
Far, but I just, I want to kind of have more, more of the Westgate conversation. But I think we can still achieve Anisha's proposed objective. I think there's still some, some other options that really aren't in the cards or, or, you know, that we could probably work through.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. I think we can still talk about, if redistricting's off the table, that really doesn't have anything to do with whether or not we do a new school or a new kindergarten center or do something bigger at Westgate. Because it would narrow it down to.
But if we build a brand new school to cause Westgate's redistricting?
Well, if we build a new school that's not only gonna be Westgate, then it's gonna require more than Westgate redistricting.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So I think the question is, are we willing to?
How bad is Westgate?
If we're.
Just rebuilding Westgate.
Right, if we're just rebuilding Westgate, then there's, then redistricting.
Doesn't happen.
Doesn't happen, so is that off the table? Or are we saying, well, if we're, if Westgate's gonna be expensive, we might consider redistricting?
Because it's a total cost picture that we have to look at.
But would you look at redistricting over a kindergarten center?
Well, yeah, I think that's where we start eliminating what I was trying to get to is, are we?
Rich.
Oh, sorry. You know, in terms of trying to move us toward the objective of the meeting, you know, it sounds like, again, what I'm hearing is option 2 and option 5 are off the table for now. Right, option 2 was Patton and Dryden because of redistricting. So if we go to, I'm sorry, maybe go to page 5 or whoever has it. Yeah, so option 2 and option 5 for now would be off the table right now. Option 2, because we've talked about no redistricting. Option 5, same issue, no redistricting. So those two, at least for purposes of moving forward until we get the Westgate, would be off the table for now. So now we're down to potentially.
No, but I would disagree with that. I'd say as an objective, redistricting is definitely a last.
Right.
Scenario. But given what we just talked about, I wouldn't rule out option 5 until we have a more robust conversation about.
With the information that we have right now, right? And that's what I was asking, if, when we come back together in February, whatever it is, is there, will we have enough to even get, you know, a rough estimate of, hey, we think it's 5 million or it's a range of 5 to 10, whatever we need to, to see if that would change.
Okay, yeah.
Us, or anything that we're saying here.
Gotcha.
So, option 5 is building a new school with the idea of pulling kids from all the other elementaries to decrease enrollment and leave space at the other school. So I'm, I'm not clear that it impacts whether or not we do work. It doesn't mean we wouldn't necessarily do something different at Westgate because it would be a new elementary school on different, like at South or at Thomas or, it would be in a different place.
But at least, I'm looking at it differently. If it's, I'm throwing that out. If, if the cost to renovate If, if the cost to renovate or do whatever we need to at Westgate is $20 million, I'd be looking at, yes, a new elementary school, but it would be built here at Dunton, right? Expand Dunton because Greenbrier is just up the road. Oh, I'm sorry, no, Westgate is just up the road and do it here to offset that. So that's.
That's what I'm getting at.
You know, you, there's, there's a different, maybe an asterisk around that particular thing that we'd have to look at.
I think.
Okay, but that's, because this is Dryden. All the homes around this building go to Dryden. So that still would require redistricting. So I guess I'm, then is redistricting not off the table?
I guess I'm trying to understand with Westgate, what you're saying. If it's as bad as it's sounding, so to speak, I'm just using that as an example. And you say, okay, we get into it and the extra additions are going to be 25 million, right? I'm just using that as an example, or whatever, 20 million dollars. The question is, is it worth putting in 20 million? Are you, if you're, why would we build a brand-new school when you could potentially, you have the land with Westgate? You would have to say, okay, Westgate, we're going to spend 20-plus million. And on top of that, we're going to spend another 20-plus to upgrade every one of these other schools? I'm just trying to under, because the, well, no, I'm just saying, because based on what we're talking about here, right? It's $24 million, option A, rough, low estimate.
Yeah.
If Westgate, we, we start going over to Westgate, and Westgate has, I forget what the number was, total, just total. But Ryan comes back and says, okay, in addition to the three classrooms in this, there's another 28 million dollars. I'm just, you're throwing out a number, 15 million dollars. The truth is, I don't know, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's, like, I don't think the renovation costs are going to get to be that much. I think it's, coming to a decision is the layout and the building meeting the needs of the school. Like, that's what it'll come down to.
Well, that's more, to me, then that's more of an optional decision, right?
What's in the five-year capital plan right now is between nine and 10 million of needs at Westgate for maintenance type of work. So at that point, if we're doing additions, does it make sense to maybe spend that nine million on new classrooms and a new addition and maybe not, not do the work in the part of the building that needs it that badly? And then eventually that part of the building?
So it's, it's, we're, I think we're focusing on just, like, not a shell game, but like, we just have money here, so why don't we just spend it here? And I think what I hear you say, Ryan, or Anne Stacey, is we're going to have to spend that anyway, right? And I hear the neat, like, why wouldn't we just build a new elementary? What I hear you saying, right, it might not, it, we might not have to do that. Or you said it earlier, like, we would build a new addition and knock down that one because it was.
Yeah, so.
It was outdated.
The center core was done in the mid-'90s, so that, that's a potential save, right? We could save the commons, the office space, LMC, the gym, again, would probably have to be expanded. But there's a big center core, art room, music rooms, things like that are in the core. The southern wing, again, is very just classrooms. There's not a lot of breakout space, there's no small offices, it's just a small wing of classrooms, right? So would that be an option to look at, building a new wing next to it and then coming back and repurposing that wing or tearing it down? Right, I think that's what we're getting to. If, if that's, again, we're going to present the initial presentation of just doing the classrooms, and then we could look at some of those other breakout hybrid.
So to Brian's point, to your point, you know, I think we need, we would love to know that number and talk about it now. But nothing I hear Ryan saying is even suggesting that we're, we need to wipe out a whole school and build another.
No, probably not, I'm just saying.
So, so, bring this one all the way home. I think we could set aside redistricting.
No, two and five are still off the table.
Two and five are off the table.
I would also argue that four is off the table for me, and I'd like to have that conversation because, you know, it's, from the numbers here, as far as our board always emphasizing being fiscally responsible, number four is $15,000 more. And also the disadvantage of families having potentially kids at three different buildings. So I would say number four is off. And then based on what Greg said, I would also say number three is off the table because it is, in a sense, kind of changing the whole kind of culture of schools and has a difference. So I would say four and three are off. And, and I'm going to add to that as far as the same, I appreciate Gina's comments about one B. I thought about the same things, and I have some clarifying questions there, and I heard Greg say the one B as well. I want to understand, Ryan, the, and maybe Dr. Bynum said, maybe at the next board meeting we'll get more. But the one A and B, like, if we didn't touch those buildings now, and, and then we see our students coming back and we need the buildings, then will it cost more down the road to add to those buildings? Is it better to do it now? That's number one. And then number two is, I heard, as far as the research goes, that we might be moving into, our country might be going to this preschool movement, then that space would be used. It's not like we're not going to be using this space, correct?
Well, I would say, yes, that's a big topic across the country. I would also say, if you look at our current early childhood programs, you know, we always have a waiting list of at least 45 students, even when we added classroom onto Greenbrier to take down some of that waiting list. So we could use a few classrooms already if we wanted to hold some preschool classes in other places. So it's just an, it's just an idea of what we could do if we had unassigned classrooms for K through five typical rooms. And that's a lot of districts that you hear adding full-day kindergarten much more quickly. It's because they have open space in their buildings and they can charge tuition for that. It becomes a revenue source, right? So while we never want to have an extremely underutilized building, that's what happened to District 25 in the '80s when we closed a large number of buildings that we owned at the time. We never want to get to that point. But having some handful of classrooms from here to there is, is something that we could always find a good use for our community.
I would, my only counterpoint, Anisha, would be, for me, for number three still is, I'm still really focused on the fact that what we don't know, which is going to be presented at the next meeting, is what future growth is. And my only concern is that one and, one A and one B address will be at 99%, 90-whatever percent right away. Two years down the line, we are going to be coming back to say, oh, we're at capacity and we have to potentially do that again. And if the projections, if the projections come in and say we're going to be flat, okay, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not against saying no to that. But if the projections are, hey, we're going to continue that growth path that we're on, and in 2000, you know, '28, we're going to be at max, and we're going to launch this in 2000, you know, '24. Well, really, I, we, I mean, I think a lot of people are like, well, we just expanded Windsor, we just expanded all these things. We just expanded all that, and we're going to come back in three years from now and say, we're going to do this all over again? I, I just only argue that to leave three on the table is an option from the perspective of understanding what future growth is going to look like. Because I do think allowing all of those homeschools to get to 80% capacity, 85, 89% capacity, allows us opportunity for growth as opposed to, okay, well, now we got to come back and fix it. That's all I would, that's the only thing I would point out.
I, I tend to agree with Chad in that sense, and it may as a counterpoint to Greg and Anisha is that, you know, there are plenty of districts out there that have K through eight, right? So the concern of putting a fifth grader within, you know, a sixth grader, there are plenty of districts that have K through eight in their districts and are, are doing fine, right? So I don't know if that's an area. But I do want to hone in on, yes, it's a little more expensive, but it provides that flexibility. Because even as Ryan, in your discussion, you said, even if we build on to all these additions into the school, well, we may have to look at, you know, office space, da-da-da, you know, there's, you know, there's ancillary costs within all those. If we focus our efforts onto two build sites, the other, you know, it's non-disruptive for the other seven schools. They still remain where they are and they get breathing room and capacity. I mean, if you go to Olive right now, they're, I mean, they're capacity, right? They are at capacity. So having that immediacy of getting flexibility, I think, is important for the future and what we look at. So in my view, and, you know, whether we say one A or one B, I think, you know, there, you know, that could be a decision even down the line. You say, oh, yeah, all right, we got to shave $7 million off or $4 million. I mean, that's an easy one. To me, it sounds like we're, at least in my opinion, we're looking at one, the consolidated one and a three to have, you know, Lori and the team do a little bit more work on or get us prepared while we look at the Westgate costs. Because that might, maybe that'll change something, or it may not change something.
Yeah, I think, I think, I thank you, Rich, for clarifying, you know, drawing that in, why that one is important. I think, Chad, you're saying those same things. And I think, I, Chad, you said, let's get projections, and that's really going to hone our focus. I think that's a spot-on comment. And if, Dr. Bynum, you said, you know, two, if we could narrow it to two, meaning one, which I know it's A and B, and then three, that might give your team the focus to move forward. What I would say to, I don't think this muddies the waters too much, but, you know, with the fifth grade addition, again, costing 10 million more and offer, you know, has some detriments. Also, an increased annual operating cost, that's not nothing, that's worth, you know, mentioning. You know, it's, you know, what, half a million, $600,000 more every year in perpetuity. That's something we need to consider because that's our bottom line every year. So here's one other way to look at one. So if you took that 10 million that you were going to spend at the middle schools, what if you put it back into option one and added a little extra room at each school? I don't know. Does that, does that create a little more of that headroom? I'm looking at Chad because you were talking about percentages, but I guess I'm really looking at Ryan and then not expecting his answer now. But, you know, what, what would that do to those, the percentage of capacity?
Yeah, I mean, I think the new enrollment study will help shake that out, right? The new enrollment study will help shake that out once we know the new whole picture and then how kindergarten blends in. Then determining, like, how much space are we comfortable with having? I, I think that'll kind of guide that.
Yes, and I was just, so if the board was, if we were collectively, okay, spending that money, well, then what, what would that look like?
Yeah, that's a really good point. Because if we're going to keep three on the table for that reason, then why not look at a one C? Essentially.
And I do see Chad's point about, you know, then, then just, because folks, you know, we are, we have to be fiscally responsible. We have heard the community say, well, you just did this, now you're doing it again. So I think that's a, that's a good one-C option. And then maybe we get to our homework assignment of Dr. Bynum saying, hey, get to one or two solutions. And so we've created these sub-solutions. But, and that next board meeting, there'll be more demo, the demographic from Dr. Chris Herta, right? And so hopefully they'll help us eliminate and get to where we need to be.
So is the board comfortable with one, including one A, one B, and three being the two options? Is, so are, are we saying we're done with option four at this point?
I, I personally was done with option four before I'd even made this, but I appreciate the fact that we're trying to look at everything. I, what I, yeah, I'm just being, you know, that's all right. But I honestly, I, what, and we've talked about this before, but not in the same scenario. I really, I would personally, and as a, as a board member and in a taxpayer, I think it makes more fiscal sense to look at a one-C as our second option and omit option three altogether. Because you're talking a differential of 11 million. So why, why put all that disruption across all, essentially, nine of our schools? Our ultimately, an entire community is going to be impacted at some point or another because they're going to have a fifth grader if they have a kid, right? So I think option one-C is our second option, not option three. That's, that's my two cents.
I, I agree with that, that's a good way to look at it.
The one, the one piece I think is time and then disruption to all the schools. So you're talking about, in that scenario, instead of building on two classrooms, I'm just throwing this out, four. You know, you're, you have way more disruption potential. Now, it may be an interesting issue at, you know, on Olive because now maybe you do go upstairs, right? You know, for that added cost. I'm just thinking, we have to keep three in mind because if we want to move to market and understand, and we don't know yet, right? That's where the next time piece would go. Because in my mind, I would think the incremental time to go to a one-C just in construction, right? Is that going to add six months, four months, eight months, two months, whatever? Is that offset by looking at three and saying, you know what, we can get three done in, six months, you know, whatever, right? With the least disruption to the community in terms of schools and traffic and, you know, construction and, you know, and even equipment-wise? Because you're concentrating your effort in two areas. So I think, you know, just for, again, we have iterations. If, if we move through this and say three is still potentially on the table, adding, you know, because as I'm thinking about it, incrementally adding more classrooms, if it comes down to that, is, in terms of a decision, is easier than making the whole, we have to make a decision at some point between one and three.
So I'm thinking, to, I'm going to, I want to address what I see as an elephant in the room and just have some real honest talk about, you know, and, and I'm not against, I don't know, I'm still weighing, you know, do we look at one and three, because, Brian, your comments? But a couple of things. One, we need to have the long view. I hear, I don't want to get too in the weeds on the time difference between one and three now. I think we're, we're talking about starting all about pretty much the same time, you know? We're not talking about one's three years away and one's one year away. So I want to be careful that, you know, let's keep the scope in mind. The other thing, the elephant I want to address, let's just, we're going to taxpayers and a lot of them don't have people, kids in our schools. But for the people that do have kids in our schools, do you feel better about, I'm going to change the way you conceive, we're going to educate your kid for these benefits that you might not really agree with? Or we're going to come to every school and make an improvement, which feels better? And if, and if I'm asking for money out of your pocket, I might feel better about, and I know that's, all those kids go to those junior highs, I get it. It's perception versus the reality of it's, it's different. It's, you know, it is a big difference. Whether or not other people do it, I get it, but that's not where I live, right? So I just, I, I'm not saying that we all have to decide where that puts the weight when you think of it that way.
I would argue we do have to decide, so. At the end of the day, we do ultimately have a decision. But, and I, and I respect what you're saying. I think the real question is, when we know the numbers, are we willing to spend an extra $10 million if that's the numbers show that we need additional spaces? And I think that's all I want to point out. I don't want to focus on the fact that, like, the middle school makes a lot of sense to me from that perspective, right? But I just also want to make sure we're not forgetting that if the numbers show that we're going to need more space, I don't want to be back here two years from now, three years from now, saying, oh, numbers are here, they were right. Guess what, we need more space and now we're, you know, I probably won't be on the board, but someone else will be sitting there like, why didn't you plan this, right? So I just want to make sure that we're looking at it from that perspective because, to your point, whether you come now to ask for the $10 million or you come back three years from now, it's still asking for additional costs. And I just want to, that's my only point. I will admit, I'm not a teacher, I'm not any of that, I just look at that from a perspective of, I want long-term growth. I think Arlington Heights is still going to be the community that people want to come to, right? And people are going to want to be in this community, so we're going to see the growth we need. We just need to plan for it, that's all I want to make sure.
So then would we propose, may I propose it, one-C and three? Compare those two, you know, because again, if the costs come in, we can always scale back, but one-C and three.
I'm not sure if it's appropriate, those are all great points. And I wonder if one-C, like Brian was saying, gets to Chad's concern, which is a really valid concern. And I wonder, at this point, we, is it appropriate to take a straw poll? I understand there's two board members who, who feel strongly about the three, but is that appropriate? But I, I, I see what Chad's saying, but.
And Anisha, or Dr. Bynum, could please share, like, could we just say one, A, B, C, and three? Is that unreasonable?
Yes, we can work on that.
So would, would that work for?
Some updated information about one options and three. Yeah, I just want to say this is, you know, this is not an easy discussion, right? This is an important discussion, looking at, right, how quickly and efficiently can we get this in place for our community now? And how can it be sustaining and, and effective for a long term? And there's no option that's the number one easiest, right? So much easier to do than, than the others. And I know if you're, if someone's not on the board, they're like, why can't you just do it? Why can't you just get a? Why can't you just get it done? But you're having the right conversations on behalf of your community, from financial, from caring for kids, from community connections, all of those pieces, long-term, and so I just really appreciate that. And you should go home feeling good about how you're engaging in this very important topic for our community. So there will always be looking back, oh, maybe we should have, right? But we'll never know then, you know, we'll never know now what we might know then, right? And you have to base, we have to make these decisions based on all the information you have right now, and being forward-thinking as well. So 10, 20 years from now, someone, you know, we've had the conversation, why did we do this that way? Well, 10, 20 years ago, that was the right decision to make. So I appreciate, again, the conversation, it's not easy. I know we've set kind of a timeline of a goal for a decision, that's the timeline that the board sets, and, and is a great one, but nothing's set in stone. As you know, we've done iterations of this, we've taken away options, we brought back options, so I think we're in the right track of going through the process and, and move it in the right direction.
All right, is there anybody that-
No, I just want to say thanks to Ryan and Stacy for taking the time to put all this together, because I think, I know you guys do a lot, and it takes a lot, and I do appreciate it. I know we're a pain, but I do appreciate it.
No, actually, and I just want to apologize if I, I wasn't understanding the idea of the new elementary in Westgate, so that's where my questions were. I wasn't understanding where it was going, I didn't mean to be challenging or-
No, Stacy, neither did I, so I'm glad you asked that question, because I, I didn't know where that came from, but, so that clarification from everybody helped me as well.
So what do we, what do we walk away? Because, again, still, I would, you know, I like the option of three, because it's a different view. 1C is just an iteration of A, B, and C. I mean, you could always scale it up and down. 3 gives us an option to look and weigh the appropriate pros and cons at that point, because you'll have a little bit more time to look at and go, oh, yeah, you know, it's, because by you do a little bit more study in C, you may realize, wow, you know, you're right, it'll cost less, it'll cost more, because we need to expand hallways, we need to expand this, we need to, you know, more LED lights, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think 1C on its own would be the nail in the coffin.
Yeah, but we, we got to look at something like that and, and allow two radical approaches at the same problem, and say, how do we address that or look at it? So, you know, I would propose, and maybe a strong man, 3 and 1C.
And the different-
I would argue you just leave one, because we're basically-
Oh, yeah, one, yeah.
We're just saying one, and we know it could be A, B, or C, reality, I don't really care which one. And C, and three, being that, hey, if the data comes back to us and says that this is the growth rate, and this is what we need, we may have to talk about, how does the middle school get bigger even at the same point in time? So we have to be realistic here, that there could be, hey, you're building on to South and Thomas for fifth, but you also have to add in sixth grade, because you've grown so big. So we just have to be, I, that's all I'm cautioning us on, like, let's not focus on the here and now, but like, we got to solve that problem, but we do have to look at, like, what this projection is going to be, so let's wait to get the projection, and the reality is it's 1 and 3, and there's going to be multiple iterations of 1 potentially, at the end of the day.
Yeah, I mean, the, the enrollment projections are huge, you know what I mean? I mean, if you just take a quick step back and think about what this district, I mean, population in Illinois is declining, and I won't get into the political ramifications of why, but it is, right? So, you know, we have to look at the best indications we have to try to determine, do we need that 1C, right, to achieve that? But, you know, at the end of the day, if we could do option 5 at the price tag of option 1A, we'd be having a whole different conversation, right? Forget the pains of redistricting, but, you know, just stating that, but, so, okay. Any other comments, right?
Dr. Bynum, you did a great job wrapping it up, and if I could just add a footnote, and just put a fine point on it for our community that's listening or will watch this later, what they should take away is the board is interested in providing kindergarten at neighborhood schools, and that we are looking at a range of options with a range of costs, and that we are trying to be forward-looking in our decision-making. And so, nothing, though it's, we're not totally set in stone on any option yet, there are some great takeaways.
Yeah, here, here, I second that. I also want to say one thing, and this is a different note, so that was a really good close to, to what we talked about, along with what Dr. Bynum had said, but I also want to say that when we're looking at these options, and I know it's brought up, like, I, I'm not sure, at the next board meeting, when we talk about, there has been interest from parents to talk about special needs and special education being at buildings versus at separate schools, and so, is that a cost thing, or is that a space thing? So I just wanted to hear about why that happens, and you don't have to answer that now, but is that something we consider when we're looking at adding on to the buildings? But I know that there's benefits of having students, like I know our Braille program at Westgate, it's been great to keep those students together, so is it a space thing, a cost thing, or an academic benefit, so?
One last, maybe. Lori, with the Crisarda study, it'd be interesting to see his take, will a potential new stadium be posit, it's serious, but will it be positive, or will it be negative? You know, what will it do to the, you know, from a business side, maybe it's great for local economy, or not for school-wise, don't know. Take a look at that.
Yep, that is a good point.
Are we saying 1 and 3?
One with the-
1 and 3?
One with an asterisk.
One has the asterisk.
And then just tell us more about the special ed piece. Thank you.
Yeah, that, thank you, Anisha, for bringing that up. All right, well, let's move on, are there no other community inputs, or are there? Oh, sure.
You guys are so used to me now. I just wanted to say that I do have a fifth grader, a second grader, and an upcoming kindergartner, hopefully will be in the first class.
Bless you.
Yeah, right? And I do think the middle school option is something that should be really considered. I went through a K to eight school my whole life, and it was great, and I think what that could do for special ed within each of the buildings, and I know I push this a lot, is going to be impactful. Is your problem at Westgate because so many children, that could be at their home schools? Maybe that's an option to consider. When we have more space, we can bring more resources into the home schools. So I do love that we're keeping that on the table, and I think it's something that would provide a better holistic child experience in all elementaries. So that's all I want to say. Thank you, guys, and I appreciate all your time.
Thank you.
Do we need to go back to?
While we- Yeah, let's just-
Mr. President?
Yes, Rich.
I move that we move to close session.
Back into close session, thank you, Rich. We have a second, thank you, Chad. All right. All in favor of moving back into close?
Aye.
All right, it's 6-0, let's go back into close, thank you.